Good evening, everyone. I'm Minister Rose Christine Jackson, and I will be your instructor for tonight. But before we get started with prayer and into the Bible study, I will be playing a worship song. So just sit back and enjoy and praise the Lord. And then we'll come back and get into the study. Amen. Bless. Falling down in worship, sing the song of ages to the land. Uh-oh. You went out. I wasn't supposed to do that. Forgive me, having a little technical difficulties here. Over will be me, sing the song of ages to the land. Your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above the wall. All thrones and dominions, all powers and positions. Your name stands above them all, and the angels cry, holy, our creation cries. Holy, you are lifted high. Holy, holy forever. If you've been forgiven, if you've been redeemed, sing the song forever to the land. If you walk in freedom, if you bear his name, sing the song forever to the land. We'll sing the song forever, and amen. And the angels cry, holy, our creation cries. Holy, you are lifted high. Holy, holy forever. If your people sing, holy, to the king of kings. Holy, you will always be. Holy, holy forever. Your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above them all. All thrones and dominions, all powers and positions. Your name stands above them all. Jesus, your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above them all. Above all thrones and dominions, all powers and positions. Your name stands above them all, and the angels cry, holy, our creation cries. Holy, you are lifted high. Holy, holy forever. If your people sing, holy, to the king of kings. Holy, you will always be. Holy, holy forever. You will always be. Holy, holy forever. Amen. Hallelujah. Glory be to God. Holy forever. Amen. Praise God. Let us go into prayer. Oh, heavenly Father, oh gracious God, we come to you on today, oh God, giving you glory, giving you honor, and giving you praise, Lord. We just thank you, oh God, for another Bible study, oh God, to able to come before thee in prayer, oh God, in the name of Jesus, and come before you, oh God, in your word, oh God. Lord, we ask in the mighty name of Jesus, Lord, that you will move me out of self on tonight, oh God, and use me like never before, oh God. Lord, bless, oh God. Hallelujah. Glory to God. Me first, and then those, oh God, that hear, oh God. I pray, oh God, that you will speak through me, oh God, that they will, oh God, hearts will be moved and transformed and, glory to God, and set free and delivered, Lord. Lord, I pray in the name of Jesus. This prayer may not just be for those that own this platform, but, Lord, it's those out of those, oh God, that will be reviewing the recording later on social media, oh God. And, Lord, I just thank you, and I praise you, and I glorify you, oh God, that you will, oh God, move each and every one of us out of self, oh God. Not just me, but each one, oh God. Hallelujah. Glory to God, that may take part in this Bible study discussion, oh God. Lord, I just thank you, and I glorify you, oh God. Hallelujah. Glory to God, that your will be done, oh God, on tonight, oh God, that souls may be delivered, Lord. I can't stress it enough, that souls may be set free, oh God, in the mighty name of Jesus. And I just thank you, and I give you glory, and I give you honor in Jesus' holy righteous name, I do pray. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Glory to God. We thank God for, like I said, another Bible study in here on tonight. My topic is, I don't know. I know the last time I taught this wasn't many here, but that was a, I don't know if that was because the Lord knew that I had to get kind of acrimated to this subject or what, but this subject here was something, it was really something for me to dig into at first. But then this time, when it came around, I just, I don't know, it just seemed like it's just much more easier. I think it's the ideal of when you first get into something, it seems like, oh, it's gonna be big, but just do it. Once you get into it, it'll be easier. You know, the Lord, he will give you the encouragement and the strength that you need, because this is a touchy subject. And like I said last time, that it may be a little rated for some youngsters. So if you have any young people, you know, have them to lead the room, because there is some things that's gonna be read on tonight. And I, you know, don't want y'all to say, "I dare they do that." But this is something that needs to be talked about within the church, because so much is going on in the church on today. And I know that the church word, church means a body of baptized believers, but we do have people that are in there that not a part of the body of Christ. And I say that because of the sin that they practice and so forth. And I'm not judging anybody to my own accord. I'm going by what the Word of God says. And I have the right to do that, to judge them rightly, dividing the Word of truth. So that's what we're here to talk about. We're not condemning anybody, because, you know, we all have sinned and fallen short from the glory of God. Amen. And this topic on tonight is homosexuality. Why is it forbidden? And our key scriptures are coming out of Genesis 19:4 through 5, Leviticus 18:22 through 23, Romans 1:26 through 27, and 1 Corinthians 6:9 and 10. Amen. Amen. And just to kind of get you brought up to what we were talking about last Bible study class that I taught this, we was talking about the form, common but misclaimed things that people say about homosexuality. It says, "The Bible and same-sex relationship/marriage four common but mistaken claims." That's what this is. And the first one is, did Jesus ever discuss sexual marriage? Has homosexual marriage, was it really necessary for him to discuss? That's what we're gonna talk about. Then we talked about how the Old Testament allowed all kinds of prohibited marriages, even including polygamy. And what would today qualify as incest? If those were permitted, why not same-sex? And then the third one says, "Same-sex relationship isn't harmful to anyone." Well, and the last one, fourth one says, "The move to prohibit recognizingization of same-sex marriage is like the church just passed blindness of slavery, women's rights, and jihadi universe, where what was clearly taught in the scriptures is now seen as wrong." That's what they say. But we're gonna get into this on tonight. And before we get started, I want, if I can get a volunteer to read for me 1 Corinthians 6:9 through 10. And I know we have this in order up here written down, but I'm not gonna go into order when I go into this, because I got a method and a reason why I'm doing it like this. So if I could get somebody to read 1 Corinthians 6:9 through 10. All right, Minister Isaiah. Come on mute, please.
1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verses 9 through 10, NIV version. "Or do you not know that wrong-doers will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived, neither the sexual immoralists, nor the adulterers, nor the adulterers, nor men who have sex with men, nor thieves, nor the greed, nor the druggers, nor the fangers, nor the swindlers will inherit the kingdom of God."
Amen. Amen. Hallelujah. Now, I'm going to go into Leviticus, the 18th chapter. And it's a lot of reading here, but this is necessary. This is why I, said I was gonna read it. Matter of fact, I'm gonna choose each one, someone that, I don't know, we have different versions. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go through and just read it in the Amplified Bible. If somebody wants to come behind me and read it in another version, they can. But this is needed, necessary to read. Okay, Leviticus 18:1. "Then the Lord spoke to Moses, saying, 'Speak to the children of Israel and say to them, I am the Lord your God. You shall not do what is done in the land of Egypt where you lived, and you shall not do what is done in the land of Canaan, where I am bringing you too. You shall not follow their statues, practice their customs. You are to follow my judgment, precepts, ordinance, and keep my statute and live by them. I am the Lord your God. So you shall keep my statutes and my judgment, by which if a person keep them, he shall live, and I am the Lord. No one shall approach any blood relative of his to uncover nakedness, have intimate relations with. I am the Lord. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your father, that is the nakedness of your mother. She is your mother. You shall not uncover her nakedness. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your father's wife. It is your father's nakedness. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your sisters, either the daughters of your fathers or of your mothers, whether born at home or born elsewhere. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your son's daughters or your daughter's daughters. Their nakedness you shall not uncover that is your own descendants. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your father's wife's daughter, born to your father. She is your sister. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your father's sister. She is your father's blood relative. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your mother's sister, for she is your mother's blood relatives. For you shall not uncover the nakedness of your father's brother's wife. You shall not approach his wife. She is your aunt. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your daughter-in-law. She is your son's wife. You shall not uncover the nakedness, her nakedness. You shall not uncover the nakedness of your brother's wife. It is your brother's nakedness. You shall not uncover the nakedness of a woman and her daughter, nor shall you take her son's daughter or her daughter's daughters to uncover them. Naked, their nakedness have intimate relationship with them. They are her blood relatives. It is an outrageous offense. You shall not marry a woman in addition to her sister as a rival while she is alive to uncover her nakedness. Also, you shall not approach a woman to uncover her nakedness during her ministration in purity and ceremonial uncleanness. You shall not have intimate relationship with your neighbor's wife to be defiled with her. You shall not give any of your children to offer them by fire as a sacrifice to Moloch, the god of the Amorites, nor shall you profane the name of your God by honoring idols as gods. I am the Lord. You shall not lie intimately with a male as one lies with a female. It is repulsive. You shall not have intimate relationship with any animal to be defiled with it, nor shall a woman stand before an animal to mate with it. It is perversion. Do not defile yourself by any of these things, for by all these, the nations which I am casting out before you have become defiled, for the land has become defiled. Therefore, I have brought punishment unto it, and the land vomit out its inhabitants. But as for you, you are to keep my statutes and my judgment precepts, and shall not commit any of these repulsive acts, neither the native born nor the stranger who lives temporarily among you. For these, for all these repulsive acts have been done by the men who live in the land before you, and the land has become defiled. Do none of these things, so that the land will not vomit you out should you defile it as it has vomited out the nation which has been before you. For whosoever commit any of these repulsive acts, these persons who do so shall be cut off from among their people, excluding them from the atonement made for them. So keep my commandment, do not practice any other repulsive customs which have been practiced before you, so as not to defile yourselves by them. I am the Lord your God. Amen. And I understand there was a lot of reading, but it is important reading. May the Lord add a blessing to the reading of his word. And if anyone wants to, I know it's a lot of reading. If you just want something you wanna pick out of there and would like to, you know, bring out or anything before I get into what I want to discuss with you on tonight? Anyone?
I'll read.
Oh, I lost it.
All right, Sister Tabby.
Okay, that was Leviticus, the 18th chapter. 18th chapter, okay. Leviticus 18, chapter.
You coming out the King James Version?
King James Version, yes.
Okay.
Okay. "And the Lord spake unto Moses, saying, 'Speak unto the children of Israel and say unto them, "I am the Lord your God. After the doing of the land of Egypt, wherein ye dealt shall ye not do; and after the doing of the land of the Canaan, whither I bring you shall you not do; neither shall ye walk in their ordinance. You shall do my judgment and keep my ordinance to walk therein. I am the Lord your God. Ye shall therefore keep my statutes and my judgment, which is, which if a man do, he shall live in them. I am the Lord. None of you shall approach to any that is near of kin to him to uncover their nakedness. I am the Lord. The nakedness of thy father or the nakedness of thy mother shall thou not uncover. She is thy mother. Thou shalt not uncover her nakedness. The nakedness of thou father's wife shall not, thou father's wife shall thou not uncover. It is thou father's nakedness. The nakedness of thou sister, the daughter of thou father or daughter of thy mother, whether she be born at home or born abroad, even their nakedness thou shalt not uncover. The nakedness of thou son's daughter or of thou daughter's daughter, even their nakedness thou shalt not uncover, for theirs is thy own nakedness. The nakedness of thy father's wife's daughter, begotten of thy father, she is thy sister. Thou shalt not uncover her nakedness. Thou shalt not uncover the nakedness of thy father's sister. She is thy father's near-kinswoman. Thou shalt not uncover the nakedness of thy mother's sister, for she is thy mother's near-kinswoman. Thou shalt not uncover the nakedness of thy father's brother. Thou shalt not approach to his wife. She is thy aunt. Thou shalt not uncover the nakedness of thy daughter-in-law. She is thy son's wife. Thou shalt not uncover the nakedness of thou, uh, okay, thou shalt not uncover her nakedness. Thou shalt not uncover the nakedness of thou brother's wife. It is thy brother's nakedness. Thou shalt not uncover the nakedness of a woman and her daughter. Neither shalt thou take her son's daughter or her daughter's daughter to uncover her nakedness, for thou or her near-kinswoman. It is wickedness. Neither shalt thou take a wife to her sister to vex her, to uncover her nakedness, besides the other in her life, besides the other in her lifetime. Also, thou shalt not approach unto a woman to uncover her nakedness as long as she is or for her uncleanness. Moreover, thou shalt not lie carnally with thy neighbor's wife to defile thyself with her, and thou shalt not let any of thy seed pass through the fire to Moloch. Neither shalt thou perform the name of thy God. I am the God. I am the God. Thou shalt not lie with mankind as with womankind. Thou shalt not lay with mankind as womankind. It is, it is abomination. Neither shalt thou lie with any beast to defile thyself therefore. Neither shall any woman stand before a beast to lie down there, there too. It is confusion. Defile not ye yourself in any of these things, but in all these, the nations are defiled, which I cast out before you. And the land is defiled. Therefore, I do visit the iniquities therefore upon it. And the land itself vomits out her inhabitants. Ye shall therefore keep my statutes and my judgment, and shall not commit any of these abominations, neither any of your own nations, nor any strangers that so general among you. All these abominations have the man of the land done, which were before you. And the land is defiled. That the land spew not you unto also. When ye defile it, and it spew out the nation that were before you. For whosoever shall commit any of these abominations, even the souls that commit them shall be cut off from among their people. Therefore, shall ye keep my ordinance, that ye commit not any one of these abominable customs which were committed before you, and that ye defile not yourself therein. I am the Lord your God. Amen.
Amen. May the Lord add a blessing to the reading of the word. Okay, we read all this, and we read where it says nakedness. And somebody might wanna know, what does it mean when they say nakedness? Nakedness is laying intimately with either one of these relatives, whether it's your blood relative or it's your step relative, and you know, it is your relative. It is your, you know, if it's your stepsister, don't lay with it. If it's your stepbrother, don't lay with it. If it is a man, and you a man, don't lay with it. If it's your stepmama, don't lay with it. That's what it said in an intimate way. And here, we have a list of things that we are not supposed to do. But one of the main, one of the common things that I read here was that many people said that a whole lot of things was, was, you know, were permitted in the Old Testament. So why not same-sex be permitted?
Where was it permitted?
What'd you say?
No, go ahead. I shouldn't have spoke out of turn. Go ahead.
No, what I said is that, okay, remember, I said that that these are common but mistaken claims, is what I'm saying. You heard that part? And I think we talked about this a little bit last week, because y'all went, well, last time I taught this lesson. And it says, "The Old Testament allowed all kinds of prohibited marriages, including polygamy." And what would today qualifies as incest? Now, all that we read was incest.
Yes.
If those were permitted by, was permitted, why not same-sex? So my question is, why would anybody with this clearly reads and states all this right here in Leviticus, why would they say it was permitted? Anybody in there? Um, Sister Tammy, you have a question or, uh, you wanted to respond, uh, respond on what I was just talking about?
Need to respond on what you was talking about.
Okay, well, right here.
Okay, but I think you did clear it up because I was gonna say it wasn't permitted in the old days. In, in the Old Testament and it wasn't permitted in the New Testament. Now, Jesus did change a lot of things that was in the Old Testament. It'd be a lot of, a lot of. Then he, you know, changed, not changed it, but. He, he shed his blood for it.
Yeah, it was fulfilled by the shedding of blood.
That's not one of them, that's not one of it, clearly say no man should lay with a man. No, a woman shouldn't lay with a beast. And all of that, and then in the New Testament, it also say it. And it's funny that you're talking about this cuz I wasn't here at your leg Bible study, I was reading this today. My study was on this today. Yeah, because I had to, you know, cuz at one time I used to say, um. Well, you know, we can't judge nobody, that you just. That they let them do what they do, let God judge them, and then it hit me today when I was reading it. I said, hold up, this is, this is in the New Testament and Old Testament, that's God's work and he's standing on it, so I gotta stand on it. Yeah, so, amen.
Anybody else have anything, um, to say on that? Okay, well, we see that it, we clearly taught. Oh, okay, I didn't see your hand when I looked up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, I think we get caught up with, uh, forth like. Um, relationships, um, blood relationships where it's prohibited now, but if you. If you go back, what people think was allowed, when you go back to the Pharaohs and the king, they, what you call the bloodline. And what they, they were marrying brothers and sisters and first cousins, it would, that's where we caught up with that. Before, that's where did I just come from, we talk about in, in, um. In the early day times of past where you had a lot of inner marriages, especially royalty. Especially with the Pharaohs and certain tribes, it was given, sisters were given to cousins and stuff like that. So I think that's a lot where we get caught up at, but, um, the particular scripture, Leviticus eighteen. Uh, what I like about this here, it doesn't make, uh. Somebody in a homosexual situation, they don't think they just being picked on cuz this law speaks in a whole lot of sexual immor- morality. It ain't just homosexuality, so they can use excuse about being picked on cuz speak our fathers messing with daughters. People messing with cousin, messing with cousin, mother messing with sons, so it hits a whole list. Immoral, immoral thing, so that's what I like about this here, so it knocks out that whole. Box where people say they just picking on me, it speaks on all these unlawful type sexual sin. That's what I like about this, amen.
And that was gonna be my question, my next question says, do you believe any of these sins rank higher than any other?
Sin is a sin is a sin, I say that, but, um.
I'm with you, I'm, I'm with you, sin is, sin is sin.
Uh, Brother Christopher?
So basically. I mean. The part that scares me. Is Solomon Gomorrah, I don't know about y'all. But this Solomon Gomorrah, man, when I read this story, man. When they tried to, when, when, when it was, when, when, they tried to, uh, gang rape that boy, oh, oh. Man, oh, that part, that, like, like, I, 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 like, with me, I, I can't speak for no gay person. But for a gay person, I expect for no two of you, Solomon Gomorrah, man, that's gonna, that's gonna.
Yeah, well. You're right, it is something because he, because of their behavior. He destroyed the whole. Land and when as we, uh, have read here. He, uh, clearly said what he was gonna do. To him, but here today we have the misconception of the fact that, uh. It was prohibited by God, it wasn't prohibited by God, Minister Isaiah, this, these people just did it.
Yes.
God never permitted it at all, he never said it was right to do.
No, I didn't say it for he permitted, I'm saying people, that's what people concepts come from, cousin. The times are old, that's what they were doing a lot, a lot of incest, a lot of marri- and, and marriages and families, you know.
I understand what you was saying and, and all of the say, the talking as well that, um. I wanna make sure it was clear for everybody, they didn't, cuz the way you was saying it, they got it from that, but you wasn't. They make, you made it seem, didn't, you didn't bring in the part that God wasn't prohibited, that's why I wanted to make it clear, that's all. That's where they got it from, okay, um, I don't know who had was up first, Elder Bud or, um, Sister Tammy?
Sister Tammy can go.
Uh, right, Sister Tammy?
Okay, you sure you don't wanna go, Elder Bud?
You go ahead.
Okay.
Before gentleman.
I was just gonna say, and, and then also back in the day when, um, when they was doing that. Um. When they was mess families, messing with families, that's to bring offspring too, because it wasn't, there wasn't nothing but family there. You know, to bring the, the, the broader generation, the population, so they, they had to have. Sex with family because there was nobody but family there. That's just my opinion, amen.
I'm, I agree with that, I got what you're saying, that pretty much what I was caught with, I was coming from too, um, but. Not, that would make you right, but in, in, in those times, even through a lot of the tribes of Abraham and them, it was like, it was like some cousin marriages and stuff like that. I ain't saying it was, it was, um, agreed on by, by God, but that, that was prevalent in those times.
Right.
Elder Bud?
I'm trying to find a scripture to back it up. Anybody wants to go first, go ahead, I'm just looking where, where my scripture is. Looking for a scripture.
Okay, where were you, go ahead, what were you saying? Elder Bud?
Yeah, I'm here, is my mic on?
You was gonna say something, um.
Yeah, I was looking for a scripture, what I'm looking for before I opened my mouth. Um, we talked about a lot of things there. And I want the scripture to back me up, I don't wanna see. I think I got it, I think it's Matthew five twenty-eight. Is what I wanna bring up, you wanna go there, that's important.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to it then.
But Matthew, what did I say, five?
Five and twenty-eight?
Yeah, I wanna look at first, I wanna see what's, just bear with me a minute. Matthew five. I want the word to speak, not me. Okay, let's see. Okay. All right, that's what I wanna talk about. We'll talk about twenty-seven, teaching about adultery. If you've heard that the commandment that says you must not commit adultery. But I say anyone even who looks. The word looks is underlying, you need to really grab a hold of that, okay? That looks at a woman with lust has already committed adultery with her in his heart. So if your eye, listen carefully, so if your eye, even your good eye. Causes you to go lust, gorge it out and throw it away. It is better for you to lose one part of your body than the whole part of your, the whole body to be thrown into hell. Okay, that's what I wanna talk about. What's it talking about, it's talking about, we look at that whole thing that you read about Leviticus. And Jesus said it, they, like you said, he changed his ways of talking when he came on the earth. He said, even if a man lusts with his eyes. We're talking about danger here, we're talking about hellfire, we're talking about really grabbing a hold of your soul. Maybe you don't go out and do the act, maybe you, um, transsexuals, okay, good example. I'm just putting it out there, you know, with your eyes, what you see, what you absorb with your eyes and take in. It's just like you've accomplished that same thing as if you did it. So we gotta realize that there's so much stuff on the web today, am I right? It's out there that will destroy your soul. More than the really physical thing, your eyes will destroy your soul if you're not careful. And that's what it says, if you have lust in your eyes, you've already committed it. Even if you lust after somebody's thinking, well, I'd like to have something like that person. Like, like after, what do you call it, wanting somebody's car or something like that, I wish I had a car like that. When you're, got your mind going that direction, you're putting forth the effort in your heart already. That your heart is already going terrible, you know what I mean, it's starting to turn. So the Lord wants us to be pure in heart and thoughts and deeds that we do. To make sure that it's bringing glory to the Father which is in heaven. So the eye, maybe some of that stuff that's in Leviticus, you know, with animals and all that kinda stuff, it is real today. Very real. So I wanted to let people know that if you're looking at that stuff and if you're absorbing that stuff, it's just like you're doing it. God sees everything, your heart you cannot hide, your thoughts you cannot hide, they're all right out there. And that I will say, thank you, amen.
Amen, so you saying if you already, uh, looking at it in with your eye and lusting after it, just like. Men, uh, a lot of men that likes to watch pornography. Are you saying that, that they already just seeing that, just like doing the act?
Exactly. Believe me, I've been there, I know.
Okay. Alrighty, alrighty. Man, um, I was trying to find the verse, but it, you all made the statement about, um. Okay, go ahead, uh, Brother Taboo, I find what I'm talking about here. Uh, Apostle Taboo?
Praise God.
Are you there? We unable to hear, maybe you having some technical difficulties, um, anybody else wants to go, uh?
Is my voice getting loud?
Oh, there you go, I hear you.
Yes.
Okay, praise God. Uh, first of all, I, with what I met on ground, there are things to, to, to talk about. But I want to do it this way, I want to get the focus for, uh, the study. For the discussion today, the focus for the discussion, I. It'll help me a lot.
Oh, okay, in the, the, I believe what the subject and the scriptures that we read are in the chat and, um. We're talking about anyway, um. Well, our, our subject topic is, is homosexuality and why is it forbidden? And I read in Leviticus a whole list of things and my question, um. Was, or, or what we were talking about is. Cuz, um, Minister Isaiah jumped to it before I got to the question. What he liked about that, it was a whole list of things that was forbidden and he didn't, had got, um. Did not exclude, you know, one or single out one per, a group of persons that, that did, you know, these things. And, um, I, um, I also asked the question, do you believe any of these sins rank higher than any other? Cuz we know that. Oh, go ahead, uh, uh, Apostle.
Okay, um. Thank you so much, uh, we start from. From the focus homosexuality. Now, where we're, where we're talking about this is more than just engaging into, uh. Uh, being, okay, when we're talking about homosexuality, it's, it's generally talking about immorality. Okay, it's immorality, something that is unclean. Something that is not of God, something that, that stains, something that, that's, uh. That, uh, that makes a man blamish. Okay, not blameless. Uh. Um, so, and, uh, the concept of this is this, anything that is not pure, it is homosexuality. Anything that is not pure, and we find out that this, uh, started right from the beginning. Okay, when the word of God is being corrupted, when men refuse to harken to the word of God, abide by the word of God. Now there's contamination. Okay, and it affects relationship even before the time or the days of Leviticus. Okay, of course, uh, uh, Brother Christopher was talking about Sodom and Gomorrah, all right? And that happens before the Leviticus era. Sodom and Gomorrah was in Genesis chapter eighteen and nineteen, thereabout. So, all those things were from beginning, something that stained, something that separates. All through ages, even to this present time. But it, it is more serious at this present time because many are deceived and distracted to. To looking at another directions and not in the directions at which the world projected. Okay, like the place at which, uh, the board was reading, now I will have love it, love the scriptures to start from. Uh, uh, verse twenty, you know, verse twenty laid the foundation to everything we read, murder. Uh, adultery and not, all of that, now what was the message Jesus was passing across? He said, for I tell you, unless or except your righteousness exceed. That of the scribes and Pharisees, there is no way you will enter into the kingdom of God. Now, that is very serious because what Jesus Christ came to explain is the maintain, the intent, the, the message. Okay, from the beginning, which men did not, you know, in those days, you have to commit it. You have, it has to be the very act of it, then once you lay hold on a woman and you go in with her and you come out. That is what they think it is, but when Jesus came, he said, no, you are wrong, you did not get the message.
Right.
He said, the message is more serious than what you think, when you look at her and lust after her, he said, you've done it because this is not the body. It is not about the body engaging with another body, this is spirit engagement. That is what Jesus is telling them, that, okay, the message in, uh, the communication of Moses, you guys did not understand. What I am here to make you understand, it is not about flesh meeting with flesh, it is about spiritual things now. Because in the beginning, it was not sex, it was not the physical sex that led to the fall of man. It was not physical. Because Adam was given to Eve and Eve was given to Adam, they are legally married, they can go ahead and do as, as long as they want. That is not a sin to them, but something came in, disobedient to the word of God is what led to. Every corruption that we are seeing today, and that is what Jesus Christ came to say, look at it. This is not what Moses is passing across, this is what Moses is saying that, okay, when you hate your brother, you have committed murder. Just hating him in your heart, he said, you've committed murder, and that is part of homosexuality, we are talking about something that is not pure. Something that is not, is not, uh, clean, something that is adulterated. A pervert mind. And that was what Jesus began to teach, and you see, when it comes to the law, he said, all the law put together, it centered on just one. Yet two, love the law. Love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul." Now, that means the message Moses came with that day is the message of people who see that they need to love God with all their heart, all their soul. Not by trying to do any sacrifice because if you love God, you will not do those things.
Right.
But the reason why you do those things is because the love of God or the knowledge, the revelation of the love of God is not in there.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, "The second one is, love your neighbor as yourself. You won't hurt your neighbor if you love not your neighbor. You won't hurt God if you love God." Now, that was the message Jesus brought. But in all these things, they did not understand under Moses. And because of that, God needed to break down so many things for them to understand. And that was what led to the Leviticus era. Okay, to keep yourself clean, you must abstain from this. Okay, you must not do this. Okay, you must not do that. That is not what God is saying, but just to break it down to their knowledge, to their level. And also God was telling them, projecting the future church to them. Is revealing the future church. This is how my church will be. Is to be a church without sport, without wrinkle. It's going to be a church pure and clean, washed. Okay? Is a church that my law will be established in their heart, not on the table of stone. Now, that was what Jesus was projecting to them that they could see in the future. And when Jesus came, he said, "Except your righteousness exceed the righteousness of scribes and Pharisees." And I tell you, if you look at it, there are many under the law that obey these laws. Like they are not guilty of this law, many of them. Apostle Paul is one of them. Apostle Paul is one of them. He fulfilled all this law. And yet the scripture said, "Anyone who fulfill the law and is guilty in one is guilty in everything." So it was not about the physical homosexuality or immorality. It is both the spiritual one and the physical because it has to be spiritual first before spirit, before physical. Now, look at it, do you know, many times we commit so many things and we go scot-free because nobody see us, but God is seeing us. Okay, for instance, for a brother or a sister to catch me in an adultery. He have to see me with another person.
Right.
But do you know, there are many times I might have engaged into those art and without nobody knowing, how? From my heart.
Wow.
How can you see my heart? How do you know what I'm thinking? How do you, how can you see it? You can't see it. But so many times, we do it, we lost so many times, we lost. And now the scripture say, "Except your righteousness exceed." And how can our righteousness exceed? And until then, we cannot be free from homosexuality. Well, every discussion we do on it can only regulate not to be free from it. Because there's only one who can make us to be free from it, and that is the law of life in Christ Jesus. The law of the spirit of life in Christ Jesus is the only one. And how does it work? Yet we can see nakedness and yet we never think negative. It never did penetrate our heart. Because there is no how you can tell me we are in a wicked world right now, in a sinful world that you will not come across. It won't place or the other. In the street, you will see them. On the phone, they are there. Some messages will pop up on your phone. It is nakedness, some sites and all of that. Some people in the society, see the people in the church coming with nakedness, half clothed and all of that. You are seeing them. How on earth will you not think or lust after those things?
Yeah. Good point.
So we are not doing it physically, but our heart is direct, it is, uh, uh, distance is giving us attention. Uh, 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 it's causing a distraction in our heart. We are looking at it and we are seeing it. Okay, now let me will say another thing. We have seen so many people who dress properly, but their figures is, is revealing. Leaving nothing to the imagination.
Mm-hmm.
All the clothes, everywhere is, is closed, everywhere their, their chest is well covered, their, 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 their back is well covered, yet you can still, the, the shape is still coming out.
Hmm.
And this is leading to all these things we are still called impure, immorality, homosexuality and all of that. Even in the church, the pastor's wife is, he want to be on the, on the best fit, on outfit. The, 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 the pastors' daughters, the, the congregations and all of that. We are seeing it. We see these things every day. We saw it everywhere. So, and he's saying, "Except our righteousness exceed." We can put regulations, yes, regulations to, uh, okay, this is how we need to do morally and all of that. But I tell you, accept our righteousness exceed that of the scribes and Pharisee. And you know how a Pharisee is? A Pharisee will not just lay hand on any woman out there. You can't catch any serious Pharisees in adultery. You will never find such. Go and read the Bible. They are very careful. You, you have nothing against them. You can't come out and said, "Hey, this man do this." You can't, you won't find one person because they are very careful. But yet, they are not free from the immorality. Physically, they are free because people are not catching them.
Wow.
But spiritually, in their hearts, they commit it every time. Every time. Now, I will say another thing, in the scripture, we remember this scripture, and they brought this woman in the very art of the adultery. They brought this woman out and they said, "Okay, we caught her." I tell you, they caught her in the very art of the adultery. Now, the question, where is the man? Okay, let's forget about the man. Let's, let's forget about the man.
Yeah.
It is not about the man now. It is about those who brought the woman out, not even about the woman. Because Jesus used her to expose all of them. They thought to expose Jesus to, to against Jesus and all of that, but it was against them. And Jesus looked at them. Any one of you without sin? Now, this same thing, this very thing, you brought out this woman for. Even one of you is free from it, stone.
Wow.
Nobody could stone because they were not free. They were guilty, all of them. Why? They never committed physically, but their heart is so corrupt, every day they do it.
Yeah.
Every day.
Excellent.
So, what are we saying right now? Talking about homosexuality, it is to bring a control in our society and to restore moralities and all of that. Yes, but the main antidote is that our righteousness must exceed that of the Pharisees. Because we can't measure righteousness within. I tell you, even now, this message right now, we cannot, if it is not that of Christ. If the righteousness we are living by is not that of Christ, then we can, we are in nowhere compared to their righteousness. It is only the righteousness of Christ we have received that exceed them all. And what is that righteousness? Now, we are seeing those people like I, like I mentioned earlier, in the church, in the street, we walk by, in the car. Yet it never did affect, affect us. It never did corrupt our mind. We were still having this boldness and this cleanliness in our heart to preach to them, to minister to them, and not to be corrupt with them. This is how the righteousness exceed, exceed the righteousness of the scribe and the Pharisee. We could look upon, uh, uh, upon a lady who is not clothed and took up, uh, uh, our, our suit, uh, uh, our cloth garment and use it to cover up. Now, it never did occur in our mind, okay, not that we don't know this is nakedness, we know this is nakedness. Who we see nakedness and not know this is nakedness? We know this is nakedness, but we never allow it to penetrate our heart. We never allow it. And this is how we can restore until the truth, gospel is, is, is restored. Now, we, 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 we will not bring much result in our society. We will not bring much result, and that is true. And I discover something again, uh, uh, sorry, I'm just speaking like, because this is very, very important.
Praise God.
I, I, I saw something happening even in the body of Christ among the believers. If you we, if you, if you have been, uh, observing, you see that most of the children of the believers who have guardians that are very strict. Okay? When they are with their parent, they behave themselves. They go to church, behave themselves. But whenever they are out of the reach of their parent, they go, they go wide. They lose themselves to do other, otherwise.
Wow.
It's happening everywhere. When they are with their parents, they dress very well, talk very well, look very innocent and all of that. But believe you me, they are not innocent when they are out there.
Praise Jesus.
But they just want to please the parent for a season, for a while.
Okay.
And why is that? Why, why will our children be able to, to live a kind of life while they are at home, or another life when they are outside? And that's why I'm saying, talking about it is just to, is just to bring little control. Okay? And, uh, restore a little, uh, more, uh, morality to, to the society. But the main cure is to restore the righteousness of Christ, the truth of the gospel, and show that every individual encountered the life of Christ. Because when we encounter the life of Christ, this is the life that will be with you where nobody is there. You will have nobody to tell you this is right, this is wrong. He will instruct you, this is right, this is wrong. Praise the name of the Lord. And lastly,
Wow.
lastly, and that's why I was talking that immorality is beyond just the engagement of the flesh. It's beyond that. It's beyond. Now, if, if I ask the question, what with a lady or with a man? In the past is, uh, maybe ten years, all of that. And the answer will be none, nobody. The answer is nobody. Okay? Then I'll ask again, how many of us, to be very honest with ourselves, we don't need to answer this question. We just have to answer ourselves in our heart. How many of us in the past one month? One month, not one year, one month? Look upon a woman and lust after her beauty. Look upon a man and desire him. Who discovered that in one way or the other, we've lost it? In one way or the other. And that is just the truth, in one way or the other.
Hmm.
Maybe intentionally or non, or, or, or intentional. Something to stay in our mind after the conversation is over, after she is gone, after he is gone and all of that. Now, he said, "Except our righteousness exceed that of Pharisees." Okay? Because, uh, he that hates, you see, in, in John, first John was talking about he that hates his brother as committed murder. That is immorality, that is homosexuality too. It's part of uncleanness, it's part of it. And, uh, he says again, he that, uh,
Oh my.
he that fakes to do good. He that fakes to, to, to do righteousness. He's also to him a sin, that all these things put together, they are the works of immorality, works of homosexuality, okay? Engaging into that which is out of order, out of the word of God. That which the spirit of the Lord is not responsible for. First Corinthians chapter, was it first Corinthians? Romans, Romans, sorry, Romans. Romans, chapter eight and verse two. Romans, chapter eight and verse two. This is what I believe to be the cure for immorality, for homosexuality. This is what I believe to be. Do you know, even some of the word we say, some of the word we say, they are also the attribute of homo- homosexuality and immorality? Some of the word we say. So it is not even going into it, like, there's some conversation that, that shouldn't even happen. Some conversation. Now, in verse two, "For the law of the spirit of life in Christ Jesus has set you free from the law of sin and of death." This is what I believe to be the cure. This is what I believe to be the cure. There are saints, there are some people who did not live anyhow in the days of Sodom and Gomara. But they were not having the spirit of Christ and all of them perished. Oh, you need to read about Sodom and Gomara? You need to know, eh, some of them, it was not because they, they, they had, uh, intercourse with, uh, men or they, they, they go after another woman, all of that. It was, so they were, it was more dangerous than that. It was more serious than that. Some of them were very wicked. Wicked, we were talking about wickedness. Oh, very wicked. And all these put together is still immorality, homosexuality and all of that, uncleanness. But the antidote is Romans, chapter eight and verse two, the life, the, the, the law of the spirit. When this law is still injected to the life of anyone, I tell you true. Go to rest. You, you can, you can just send your daughter to school and just go and lay your head and rest. He will come back with glory. He will not disappoint you. You will not be put to shame because this law is at work in him or, or, or her. And this is what I believe to be the antidote, praise the name of the Lord.
Bye.
Wow, praise God, brother, amen.
Alrighty, uh, Sister Darlene?
Yes, um, hello, brothers and sisters. Um, I came in about twenty minutes after seven and what I picked up, we, we were talking about incest. Am I correct or wrong?
Well, actually, our, um, the subject is, is talking about homosexuality and I read in Leviticus that it was not only just those, the sin of, um, homosexuality, but it's a whole lot. And incest was, you know, one of the main points. And the thing is, was because the, the question was asked, is, uh, any sin higher ranked than others? Cause we know that a lot of people, uh, they like to, to say that some homosexuality is, is the biggest sin and all this and, and you know, or either this is a big sin or that is a big sin. But we know we have incest, we have adultery and, 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 uh, you know, other things that are going on, bestiality. All that, well, all that was in Leviticus that I read. So, why is it that, um, people would single out homosexuality?
Well, just off the top of my head, I know that all sins can be forgiven but one. And that one sin that cannot be forgiven is not to accept the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Okay, but every sin, any sin but that one is forgivable.
Amen.
You know, I don't, I, if, if you like me to look up the scripture, I can and I can put it in the chat and you could share it. You know, but, um,
I agree with you.
Yeah, that's the only sin that is unforgivable is for you to deny the Holy Spirit in your life. That's the, but anything you do on this earth, homosexuality, transgender, any sin but that one is forgivable according to the scriptures. That's all I wanted to say.
Exactly, exactly. But we, we, um, I, I agree with you exactly, but we know that so many people in the church, they just think that that is the worst sin, but, and they always bring up, that's the one that's the abominable. I see you, uh, uh, Elder Bud. And as I read that, how he talked about how it, all these sins that I read in Leviticus, they were recusing. And that he was going to, you know, vomit them out and he was gonna cast out what they wouldn't even be able to be redeemed, uh, on with their people. So how, why is it that, it's just that a lot of Christians like to single out homosexuality when we know, we see all this other stuff going on in the church? Like I said, incest, we got the adultery, um, fornication, we got bestiality and all this going on and stuff. And people know about these things and they sit around and whisper and talk about it, but then they, they wanna, uh, broad beat and beat up the person that same sex. Uh, and I'm, I'm, to me, I'm like, why? I wanna know why, cause a sin is a sin.
Yes, right, yeah. And it's, and it can be forgiven. You turn from your evil ways. Okay? And that's through the sin, that's only through the spirit.
Amen.
Okay? It's not that we can do it ourselves. It's only through the spirit of God that we can turn away from our evil ways. And that's the only, that's the only sin that's unforgiven is not to accept the spirit.
Amen.
But those who, but, but those who say that, well, I think homosexuality is the worst sin, I think that because they are unlearned in the scriptures. But those who, but, but those who say that, well, I think homosexuality is the worst sin, I think that because they are unlearned in the scriptures.
Yes, I agree, and then some of them, it's not that, uh, not just that they are learned in scripture, but some of them struggling. With it themselves, and they trying to, it's a cover up.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Amen, amen. Elder Bud and then Brother Christopher.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to say something about that. I like what Brother or Apostle Taboo said. You know, then, when they're home with their parents, they're doing great. Everything is good, they see everything's good, there's not my child would do that or anything else. And then when they're away, and they get with the peers that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing, they connect to them. It's like you always said before, you have different personalities, you know, it's like schizophrenia in a way. Because they said, you know, schizophrenia is where you have so many personalities inside of you. When you're home, you're good, when you're at work, you goof off with the guys, when you're out playing sports, you get really crazy, you know? Uh, you get on the dance floor, you go crazy, all different personalities and everything, but it all ties in to what you have in your heart. You know, and that's what we're talking about, the heart, because being by myself, I can do all kinds of things, nobody ever know it, you know what I mean? But it's in my heart that has to be right before God, so when I do speak, it'll be an authority, and it won't be just the flesh. Because, you know, when I'm here, I try to pray that God continue to work in my heart. When I hear the Bible studies, I intend to grow in knowledge, and I try not to judge people. Because a lot of people judge a lot of people, but then, you know, I look at myself and, who am I? Who am I? God, you saved me, why can't you save them, you know? You, there's no more love for me than them, you love us all, you know, but you cau- causes. The goodness of the Lord will cause a man to turn from his sin. So I thank God for that point, because so many times we're under the roof of our parents. But when we walk away, we're somebody else, just the same way with the world. And like he mentioned about something else, you got a lot of commercials that pop up on your phone. That instantly go through your head, and you've got to guard that, you've got to protect it, you got to know to turn off the TV. You need to do all kinds of things, the spirit is always talking to us. And people say, well, God doesn't speak to me, well, you're not listening, because anything that is of, of evil. Is it not of God? Only the holiness remnant will serve Christ.
Brother Christopher?
And uh, you know. We, we, we can always, we can always look at it, because the truth, thing. The truth is not supposed to feel good. That, eh, but see, we, uh, a person will always try to codge in the Bible. It's, for, to uh, pervert God's word, to make it, oh, okay, this don't feel good. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to add something, but, yeah, yeah. Basically, they trying to. Uh, upst- it, it, it's like the upside Bible, basically, they trying, they trying to make their own, their own law, it, it's like, it's like a upside Bible. So, when they read, they're like, you know what? This don't sound good, this don't, but I'm trying to make my own law. And that's when you kind of get, you in trouble, you, 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 you're trying to make your own law. But they say, tell you like, hmm, no, God's word, it, it don't, see, yeah, that's the whole point. When they read about homosexuality, what God has said, it don't feel good to them, so that's why. They try to add something to make it, to, 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 to make it feel good for themselves.
Yes.
I agree, amen. Okay, Sister Darlene, and then uh.
I put the, the, the scripture that I was quoting from the top of my head in the chat. And it's Matthew, chapter twelve, verse thirty-one.
Right, right.
It says, therefore I say to you. Any sin and blasphemy shall be forgiven, people. But blasphemy against the spirit shall not be forgiven. That's what I was talking about when I was coming off the top of my head, and I went to the scriptures. And got the scripture to back up my, my point, that's all I wanted to share.
All right, yes, and I agree with you, wholeheartedly. So true. Okay, uh, Elder Bud and then Apostle Taboo.
Yeah, I want to say this real quick, because I don't want to take away from Apostle. Um, the thing is, when I was, I've been married four times, okay? And each time, after the first time, was my, my complete fault. But after that, it was like, I found myself manufacturing, that's a good word. Manufacturing a marriage, one without God, for a while, we'd have Bible studies or something like that, but. I found myself trying to do right, work hard and all that, trying to make it seem right. You know, try to go to church, and even though still things weren't right, and. I was convicted of all the kinds of things, manufacturing our own life. Instead of what God wants in his, our lives, we try to make it right. It's not like we just go out and murder somebody, or just cold-blooded, but we, we try to manufacture. Make it comfortable for us, so that we don't have to, and we find ourselves making God the way we want him to be. Rather than way he says he is. So with that, I'll pass over to Taboo, praise God.
All right, Apostle Taboo. Amen. Apostle Taboo? Waiting for me coming in. Are you there Apostle?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, amen, amen.
Um, I, I just want to speak uh, a little on uh, the, the scripture. And that is so true, I, I know it's going to be another, another uh, this entirely, but look at the scripture I put up. But before then, I say, there is just one sin that cannot be forgiven, and which uh, Darlene Clark. And, and that was also pointing out still, and which is true, but aside that. Uh, every other sin can be forgiven, and that is true, every other thing, and at the same time. All other sins are equal, they are on the same place. The same punishment, the same whatever, it might be different direction, but they are the same thing. The same thing, everything, anyone who did not kill but lie, the Bible says he is a killer. And just imagine, somebody who went to kill and somebody who lied, the Bible says the same thing, he that hates his brother. Is a murderer, he, a liar is also a murderer. So all the sins, they are in the same category, praise the name of the Lord, and another thing again is this. In James, chapter two, and verse ten and eleven, James, chapter two, he said, for whosoever. Shall keep the whole law, every law, and yet offend in one point. Here what the scripture say, is guilty of everything, everything, so, anyone who keeps the whole law but lie. Is guilty of murderer, is guilty of, of, uh, uh, every other thing, is just guilty. It means the same punishment that comes on the murderer is coming upon him. And this is what Jesus was now pointing out to us, except this righteousness exceed that of Pharisee, because now, this. Scripture is the standard for the law, the standard for the Old Testament. Okay, this is the standard, this is their righteousness, their righteousness is, I don't do this, I don't commit this, I don't lie, I don't kill. This is their standard, and yet he's saying, for whosoever, any one of them, if they are guilty at any point. They are guilty of everything, and now, as a believer now in this house dispensation, there is nobody, none of us, none of us. The law that these people could not keep, how on earth can we keep it? How on earth? It's not possible. Because there is a day somebody will offend you, and you'll get angry. Yeah, you'll get angry, and thank God that is also, is also balanced, be angry and do not sin. But there's only one thing that can make it happen, is this the spirit of Christ, Romans, chapter eight and verse two. Because if that spirit is not in you, you will get angry and you will sin. You will get angry and you will, they are kind of things somebody will do to you, you'll be like, I just want this person dead now. Dead, dead now, I don't want to see this person again. Now, that is the only way we can escape the law, is Romans, chapter eight and verse two, and lastly. And lastly, in verse eleven, he said, for he that said, do not commit adultery. Said also, do not kill. Now, if thou commit no adultery. Yet, if thou kill, that art become a transgression of the law, in other word. If you did not commit adultery, but you kill, he said, you are guilty of the sin of adultery. You did not commit adultery, it was killing you did, but now if you kill, he said you are guilty of adultery. And you are also guilty of killing, so there is no how a man, and Jesus make it very. We just need this grace, all of us need this spirit, because if we had to go by the standard of Jesus. Oh, Jesus make it very clear to everybody, you, you, you are not free, the way Jesus came to say it, nobody's free. Nobody, the revelation of Jesus is a, is a review that nobody's free. Because you did not commit it, yet you look at a woman or you look at a man, you did not do it, yet your heart has already committed it. You've imagined those things in your mind, you say, you've done it, you've done it. So Jesus make it clear to those who are boasting, to the, to the law, uh, uh, expert. He, he said, forget about your boasting, if you look at it, you've done it. And this is why many people read, uh, like what apostle, uh, Minister Rose was saying. Those who think homosexuality is the greatest of all sin. And Jesus was speaking to the apostle, to the Pharisees, he said, look at it, men may not catch you doing it, but actually you've done it. And it's still the same thing, you did it in your heart, so, it is not about you doing it physically, you've done it in your heart. You did not do it physically, but you've done it in your heart, it is still the same punishment, because they are very proudful. We did not do this, we come, you know, if you study, if you listen to Apostle Paul, you will know how proudful. How proudful a Pharisee is. According to the law, Apostle Paul say, I keep everything, according to law. Thank God for Christ in his life, thank God for Jesus in his life, that is how a Pharisee talk. They claim, they, they, they talk boastfully, with proud, because they are not guilty of all these things. Physically, but spiritually, they are guilty of everything. Everything, so homosexuality is not the greatest of all sin. It's the same, all of them, but the, there is one that is greatest, and that is what I'm pointing out with uh, uh, my beloved sister too. Unbelief, you know, when you read Hebrew, chapter six, and verse four, to six, to eight. Now, the Bible makes us to understand, now that is the only sin, the greatest sin, you know? When God forgive fornication, God forgive adultery, virtually everyone who came to Christ. Everyone who came to Christ can share his experience or our experience about those things. Is it anger, is it lies, is it uh, fornication, is it adultery, is it all of that? Everyone who came to Christ is guilty of one or, or, or one or two of this, everyone. Everyone excluding nobody, the great apostles you are seeing today, the great prophets you are seeing, the great evangelists, prophets, whatever. Every one of us, whoever came to Christ, are guilty of it. We are, we have been brought out from those things, Christ brought us out of those things, okay? But yet, there is one that we can still commit and lose it completely, there is just one, and that is unbelief. In Hebrew, chapter, Hebrew, chapter six, Hebrew, chapter six, and verse four, he said. Okay, let me take it from, from this. Okay, from four, for concerning those who were once enlightened, look at it, who were once enlightened and tasted of the heavenly gift. Not gifts, gift, which is the Holy Ghost, now, and were made partakers of the Holy Spirit. And have, and tasted the good word of, of God and the powers of the age to come, verse six. And then fell away, it is impossible to renew them again unto repentance, saying they crucified the Son of God for themselves. Again, and put him through an open shame, so it is impossible, it is only unbelief. Unbelief, God will forgive a drunkard, a fornication, a fornicator, an adulterer, a, a, a murderer, a liar. He will forgive, and he has forgiven every one of us who have received him too. We were terrible, we were terrible before, we were very terrible, but we have been redeemed, been forgiven. But yet, if we did not believe, if we did not believe, then there is no repentance, there is no forgiveness. There is no forgiveness, so, and all those thinking that homosexuality is the greatest, they, they lack knowledge. They lack knowledge, and they are very proudful, okay, they are very proudful. Simply because no man caught them doing the, those things, doesn't mean that they are free. Doesn't mean that they are free from those things, if no man catch you doing it physically, does not mean that they are free. There is one who catches one from the heart, there is one who know, who sees your thought, the thought is very loud than whatever they could ever imagine. Very loud, very loud, you know, sometimes we think our word is loud than our thought, but that is not the case with God. With God, our thought is louder than our words. But to human, our words are louder than our thoughts, but to God, the thoughts are always louder. Always louder than our words, because we can say one thing in our mouth and think another thing in our heart, so the thought is always loud. So those who think that homosexuality is, homosexuality is the greatest, they are just being, being ignorant. They're just being ignorant, and they want to subdue so many, maybe their followers, okay, the ignorance, the gullible one. They, they, they want to surprise them, to, to claim, uh, to, to, to sow themselves one kind of. Uh, uh, one who is an holy man, holy woman, no, no. It is the spirit of the Lord that make everybody holy, not by them as turning on all of that, because they are, they, 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 they were not caught. Doing those things, praise the name of the Lord.
Elder Bud?
Yeah, I want to share one thing, I really like that, um, I want to read that also. It says, and who then turn away from God? It is impossible, the word is impossible, to bring such a person back to repentance, once he's already tasted. Of the spirit of God, for it is impossible to bring back to repentance, those who once enlightened. Those who have experienced the good things of heaven and shared in the Holy Spirit. Who have tasted the goodness of the word of God and the power of the age to come, and who then turn away from God? It is impossible to bring such people back to repentance, by rejecting the Son of God. They themselves are nailing him to the cross again, what I want to say to that, I want to say something. That it's like, if it's really raining on a hillside, and you're trying to climb this big mountain. And it's pouring rain, and the run, water's just running down this mountain, and you're trying to grab a hold of the mud or a bush. To try to get to the top of the mountain, you're spinning your wheels, you're spinning your wheels inside your soul. Inside your heart, that even though you pretend to be something, which you aren't. And that, you know, it's only by the grace of God, we are who we are today, we can say, Lord, cleanse my heart. Make me pure, and you know, help me every day, and say, that, give me to tomorrow. And I will try to do better tomorrow than I did today, because we're always checking, examine ourselves daily. To see that we're in the faith, because all we're doing is not only fooling everybody else and keeping God from using you. For the tool that he called you to do, you're subtracting from your own life, and you'll find out, the glass will be empty at the end of time. Thank you.
Amen, amen, I thank the Lord.
Amen, amen. I thank the Lord for each and every one of you all. Uh, you know, y'all made my class so tonight. Because I I had questions, but this was interesting that that we stay right here where was need to be at. And it needed to be explained, because like I, um, I believe I said in the last class, it's not that just because my title is talking about homosexuality and is is being is forbidden, that don't mean we just singling out homosexual out. Because here it clearly states in the word of God in several scriptures. Um, and you all can write these scriptures down if you want to, where it actually talks about how, uh, it, uh, you know, that God, he meant for it to be between man and woman, and that's Mark ten, six and ten. We have, I mean, uh, Mark ten, six through nine, excuse me, Mark ten, six through nine. We have the, um, the Genesis two and twenty-four. We have Leviticus eighteen, twenty-two, Leviticus twenty and thirteen. And then going back to the New Testament, we have first Timothy one and eight, where it talks about a whole lot of sins. We read in the whole book, uh, I mean, uh, chap-, uh, the eighteen chapter of Leviticus, a list of sins. And it's actually was talking about the sins that you do uh, within your body, these the the lascivious sins, as they talked about in 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 Jude. And that's one as well, Jude, the seventh verse, one to seven. But in, um, first Timothy one, eight through eleven, I will read this very quick clearly for you because these sins are the same, just as everyone has been saying. That is not, it's only one thing that God won't forgive you of. And we know that because we have many people are have have are in Christ now. We got preachers, teachers, evangelists, and 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 prophets and bishops that once fell somewhere in these categories. And it said, now we know that the law is good. If one use it lawfully under this, that the law is not laid down for just but for the just but for the lawless and disobedient, for undoubtly and sinners, for the unholy and profane, for those who strike their fathers and mothers, for murderers, sexual immoral men who practice homosexuality, enslavers, liars, perjurers, and whatever else is contrary to sound doctrine in accordance with the gospel of the glory of the blessed God with which I have been entrusted. And then he goes on, it it talks about, um, in, uh, what is this, first Corinthians seven, seven and two, he said, but because of the temptation of sexual immorality, each man should have his own wife and each woman her own husband. Then, you know, we have all this is talking about. We already talk about over in first Corinthians six, nine and ten, where it named out greediness and drunkers and reviles and swindlers, uh, will not inherit the kingdom of God unless they repent. That's the only way that they will inherit the kingdom of God. But it, here's where it all wrapped up, the the way that you can be forgiven. Therefore, if any man is in Christ, he is a new creature. The old has passed away and behold, the new has come. Amen. Once you are in Christ Jesus and you have come into the truth and the knowledge of the Lord, just like all those scriptures, Brother Taboo, uh, Elder Bud and and Sister, uh, Darlene have all brought up are very good scriptures. And but this was the right here, all them things are passed away. If you come into the knowledge of Christ. And I I believe I shared this my last class when I was talking about homosexuality. I have, uh, relatives in my family, and one particular, me and her had a conversation where she was saying that most of the family have cast her out. But I told her, and I would tell anybody. You know, I started told her other, um, members in the family, and it was her and two, two more, um, of my relatives, that those three, uh, they younger than me, and I always had them with me when they were young. Uh, we did a lot of things together, and I said, their sin is no smaller than your sin. Their sin is no greater than your sin. For all our sin, I said, and I would never cast you out just because of the sin that you have in your life, and I ain't cast them out. So never, uh, that I'm here to let you all know that, that we aren't supposed to cast nobody out because of whatever sin they have in their lives. We supposed to show them love. The word of God told us out of love and kindness if I drawn it. And and I'm not saying that that you are supposed to go along with them when they doing these things. I'm not saying that you are supposed to, uh, condole them when they're doing these things, but what I'm telling you is live the light in front of them and yet show them love. That's the only way you can bring them into the knowledge of Christ. Because I myself, I wouldn't want to hear nothing you got to say about God if you gonna show me a whole lot of hatred, a whole lot, you know, dislike. Or trying to point out my fault only when you see this one next here, but you next to me, they, um, committing adultery. There is, you know, incest going on. They had, you know, this or that or whatever that God has said that is a sin. No, I'm not gonna hear nothing you have to say. If that's what you reading for, but I'm here to let you know that God loves you just like he loved the next one. All have sinned and clothed short of the glory of God. Amen. Amen, amen. Um, I just once again thank each and every one of you all for just coming in and and just being a part of this class. Once again, I just, no, God is good. And I, I I I am grateful for the Lord. For just coming in and showing up and just showing out as he does always. And I want to run briefly through a couple announcements before we, um, close out in prayer, before I I ask, um, our minister, Isaiah to close us out in prayer. Our announcements are as follow. Amen. We ask for you all to, um, come out and be with us on, um, next, um, next week for our Bible study, um, on Friday night, we have our pastor Teresa Viddy, that she will be teaching that night, and that's, uh, July the twelfth. And, um, I will be be teaching, I mean, that's July eleventh. I will be teaching Saturday night, July twelfth. At same time, amen. And, um, I, let me bag up here because I I surely forgot to tell you Thursday night prayer call. For, um, next week, Thursday night prayer call, we have who is our prayer call for this Thursday night? I'm looking, but I don't think I see them up here. Does anybody have, um, uh,
What date is that?
The tenth, July tenth, Thursday at seven P M. So just, just get on that line with us. You don't have to have no SS toll. You just dial the number straight through. You can find the post on our, um, any of our pages as well as our group page, Soldiers on Fire for Christ. And just dial that number and you will be in. Amen, amen. And once again, Friday, the eleventh, our pastor Teresa will be teaching. And again, next Saturday, the twelfth, I will be teaching. And if you want to be a part of our class, just make sure that I'll get your email or however you want me to send you the link. So you can be a part of these great Bible study classes that we have. And, um, on the the eighteenth of this month, we will have, not the eighteenth, but the nineteenth, we will have our men and women combined with men and women panel discussion. And that will be Saturday, the nineteenth at twelve noon. And again, if you would like to be a part of of this great discussion, just make sure you get get in contact with us in time so we can make sure you get that link so you can be a part of this great panel discussion. We have some great discussions. I'm telling you, they be real good.
Twelve noon?
Twelve noon. It's always at twelve noon when we have the the combined panels. Amen, amen. Yes. And, um, I also, I would just like to let you know that we as Soldiers on Fire for Christ have a, um, a prayer email for those of you that are in need of prayer. We don't want you to be an island alone, stand alone by yourself. There's always someone, there's Soldiers on Fire for Christ there, waiting to pray with you and for you. And we have two avenues for you to contact us with your prayer request. And the first one is our email address, which is soldiersonfireforchrist@gmail.com. So please, you know, notify us and let us know um, what your prayer request is, and you want us to pray. Uh, and send it back to you through email or or let us know if you want us to call you. Give us that number. Okay, amen. Amen. Give us a number or somehow you want us to reach you. Also, we have the voicemail where you can leave your prayer request there. And that number is six four one, seven one five, three, nine, zero, zero. Again, that, um, voicemail number is six four one, seven one, five, three, nine, zero, zero. And please leave us a, um, a way to get in contact with you when you go over there. And and there is an extension number. I'm so sorry. That extension is six four zero, four, six, nine, pound. Again, that extension number is six four zero, four, six, nine, pound. Amen. So we are there waiting to pray with you and for you. So please use these two avenues that we have with you, to pray with you, amen. And we would like to also, there's something new that Soldiers on Fire for Christ is inviting you to be a part of. And that is Soldiers on Fire for Christ have, um, a relaxation and movie night. Where we can come together virtually on Zoom and watch a, a, a movie together, and then afterwards, we have a Q and A discussion, what you got out of the movie? Or what was your great, best part about the movie? And just have a good time. You can come and bring your snacks and 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 sit back and relax, you know. Make sure you have your mic off, because we don't want to hear you smacking during the movie. Yes, your smacks and your drinks. And that's our next, uh, movie and Q and A will be, um, the twenty, um, seventh of this month, July twenty-seven, seven P M. So please make sure you let us know, uh, uh, ahead of time so we can make sure we get you those links so you can be a part of our movie night. Last and but not least, we as Soldiers on Fire for Christ have partnered with the St. Jude Foundation. And we're asking you to help us reach a goal of one million dollars. It's not a whole lot of money what all of us can band together and do. Do the work together. Because of many of us, we throw away a million dollars in a year by ourselves. Some in six months and some even less. So I'm here to, here to tell you that God has already ordained or said it was our right for us to give to these, because he said, when you done it to the least of one of mine, you have done it unto me. He also said, when you have the opportunity to to do good and you do it not, hmm, yes. Now, he gave you the opportunity to do what's well. So we're asking you to go to our, um, social media pages. Each of us have it pinned on our page. Or either it is pinned at the top of our Soldiers on Fire for Christ, um, Facebook page. And you can go to there and you will see a little boy in that green T-shirt and underneath there, tap on to that and it'll take you to directly to the St. Jude Foundation. You know, many of these children are born with these diseases, the, uh, cancer, and they don't, they don't deserve it. And you know that if it was any of your loved ones or friends, um, that that children had this child disease of cancer, you will want everybody you know to give. So I'm asking you to please give and and contribute to to their, um, medication, their treatments. Um, even the things that they need in the hospital, their beds and the gowns and the toys and even the room and board for their parents. So their parents won't have to worry about how they're going to do anything. Or, you know, because many of them don't have the money to pay for this. But if we will just give out of our hearts and and by the leading of the Lord, we can reach this goal together. Once you go onto St. Jude and push that link, you go to St. Jude, they will bring up suggestions amount, and you can pick your suggestion in the amount. St. Jude have asked that we give at least five dollars minimum. But I'm asking you to please give more if you have more. You know if you have more, and God knows that you have more to give. And it don't have to be a one-time thing. You can give it many times as you want to. So I'm asking you to please help us reach this goal and and help these children. You know, we may have a goal today of a million dollars, but that don't mean we got to stop once we reach that goal. Because you all, I I I I'm gonna believe that you, somebody out there is gonna help us reach that goal. Somebody out there is gonna be obedient to the call of God, because God, God has told us that is our, and we supposed to give. And we giving to a worthy call. Many times we give to so much junk, where we just throwing away our funds. But we're asking you to give to a worthy call. Amen. These have been our announcements. Please govern yourselves accordingly. And before I turn it over to Minister Isaiah, I see, uh, Elder Bud has a quick question or statement that he's going to make before we close out.
Yes, it was excellent Bible study. You know, sometimes when we're doing all these things, we get nervous. And we, you know, in our flesh and everything else, but God, when we give it to God, he takes care of it and just flows like a river. Praise God for tonight. It was really good. Um, another thing that you mentioned about the YouTube channel we have.
Our YouTube channel, uh, no, but I didn't go through all the announcements because I was trying to make it quickly. But we do have a YouTube channel, as Elder Bud was saying, and it's Soldiers on Fire for Christ. On YouTube, just go there, any of our sessions we have, our Bible studies, our meeting greens or or any of the panel discussions, we do have them. But I was just trying to quickly go through the announcements. Alrighty. Amen. God bless you. We're now in the hands of, um, Minister Isaiah, that he will close us out in prayer.
Amen. Thank you, Minister Rose, for this class you taught. Amen. And like I said, she wasn't picking anybody, you know what I'm saying? All sins are sins are sin, but there's always a way out. They're called Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Praise God.
Let's pray. Father God, Lord and Savior, thank you for this night, Father God. I thank you for this wonderful sister, Father God, for the class she taught to, uh, tonight, Father God, Minister Rose, Father God. I just asked everyone that listened to this line, got something out of it, Father God, that able to listen to the line, they examine theirself, each and every one of us, Father God. So Father God, as I always say, I pray that it's reached out to everyone, that gave them food and thought, Father God, that you strengthen them on this night, that you let them know that you, you are always there for them, each and every one of them, Father God. No matter what problem we go on to, what struggle we go on to in our lives, Father God, let them know there's a a God that looks, sits high, looks low, Father God. But Father God, I ask you that you be with all of us on the night, Father God. We appreciate everything that was said on this, on this night. We appreciate everything that was said on this, on this night, Father God, all the people who chimed in with the, with the scriptures and their comments, Father God. Just thank you, Father God. I thank you, Father God, for having this line to be clear, Father God, that no technical interference came through, Father God. So Father God, I just want to thank you and I say this in your son's precious name, Jesus Christ, amen.